June tenth, twenty twenty five, Greenham City Council meeting to order a roll call.
Mark Harris, Dave Black, John Norman, Bruce Vance, Phil Dowdy, Jamie Gillan.
I will start off by go ahead and give my report, pass those out, and go ahead and make those as you all want them part of the record. Total work orders completed as of date is twenty six. Water leaks prepared, three service line leaks, one main line leak, put in two new water taps. Water loss is still twenty four point one nine percent. Doing some flushings that's continuing, and we've had a couple of fires. We completed approximately eighty one delinked rail cutoffs. We've done leak detection off the Cherokee Greenham North Port tanks. FEMA, which is, we got the board table set up over at the minute Roger Harris called in his office. We've got barely enough room to walk around. It's an unprecedented amount of disasters that we've had that we've qualified for. But disaster forty eight forty eight, final cost obligated us will be eighty one thousand dollars that will be received. And disaster forty eight sixty, it's approximate cost two thirty five to three hundred thousand. Some of the projects are one hundred percent complete will be obligated soon. We don't know how much that we're getting. We still also have another disaster that we're working currently. So I know we've got a meeting on the twelfth, and then a site visit on the nineteenth, another site visit on the twenty third. I will let you guys know the floating intake will be happy to switch it out soon. I had a friend of mine call me to fish this past Wednesday. The hiking is leaking very bad in the floating intake out there right now, and there is also a tree leak. So we'll probably be getting that scheduled just as soon as the little sandy river clears up. It's not afflicting the flow into the plant whatsoever yet, but if it does start affecting, we are prepared to switch it out. But I'd like for the river to clear up a little bit and not be as swift. You'll notice I've got Fifth Street Bridge on there. Want to come back to Fifth Street Bridge, we'll do a little lengthy discussion on that. I've got a meeting with some Riverside Tribe residents on in June for bike water cleanout. I can tell you that the WPA denied, excuse me. The WPA project that we applied for denied that part of that project. But I've talked with the contractor, we've gone over and waded through some people's backyards. And I think we've got a plan. So I'll be meeting with some residents that have got the text messages. Pam Jordan was nice enough to get some of those people's names and numbers and start texting for me the ones that I need here at this meeting. Be meeting with the Winterford Street residents soon, and that'll be more information coming on that WPA project. And what I'm about to tell you on the Winterford Street project, this is I don't want you guys that live on Winterford Street or cross from Winterford Street to jump the gun too early. So they have approved from Jefferson Street about Rocky Elster's house for cleanup. So once that gets finalized, I get that in variety from the engineer and from the WPA team. And that's when we're going to do what I said we're going to do a month and a half ago. In no sense, my mind is for cleaning out a quarter of the creek and then not cleaning out the other quarter of the creek. And if we don't succeed at that, then we'll do the same thing that we're going to do for the Riverside residents as we will for that quarter of that creek that it didn't get the funding. But I'm hoping and being optimistic that we'll get it fully funded. But right now, it's just funded from Jefferson Street to the tunnels to out Rocky Elster's house. July fifth will be the fireworks. That's a work in progress. As you all know, that's a huge undertaking. Police answered seven hundred and eighty four calls. Fire department answered seven calls. A rough estimate that we've saved since I signed the contract with you guys to date is four hundred and eighty four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. This coming Saturday, Stevens tree trimming will be in the park to start doing some tree trimming, getting ready for fireworks and for the new playground equipment that's sitting over by the pole barn. That's about halfway assembled now. And they'll be taking the tree off the floating intake as well on Saturday. So that's my report, and I'd like to go ahead and make it part of your record, Lacy.
I'm looking at one question, sir. Police calls. Do you have any idea what's been said is that was collecting intensive juvenile hours, juvenile arrests?
I'll get it for you. I've got dumb phones that'll take me.
That's all right. That's just, but there was certain juvenile calls.
Let me see how easy this will be for you.
Thank you for doing that report, because that's going to really look good in the record. That's work that's been accomplished, which is really nice.
Mike, by Fred, you just called this out and asked him, I just leave me the trouble of saying I have to go through all these different categories, because it's different categories.
I'm just really curious to break down that one.
Yeah, it is broken down, but there's a whole list.
I figured that, why ask?
What is that the road works for the books?
Just state agricultural conservation district.
Yeah, something like that. That's who that's going to be. So at this point in time, we'll go through the audience, and we'll start out with Kevin Frazier. He's going to be the spokesperson, I'm assuming, a lot of those folks back there are here by the water.
It's Kerm Frazier, but that's no big deal.
I told you that earlier, I'm sorry.
There is a Kevin Frazier in the neck of the woods, that's why it's clarified now, we're two different toes. But I live off Clevenger Ridge on the top of Frazier Lane, which is off Route ten. And I was kind of wondering if there were any projects coming up to get water in that area? Or if we can look into it deeper and see what we can do to get water there?
Does that come down to double A?
If you're at the light and you're headed south, it's the first road to the right is Clevenger.
Pass Route seven?
No, four Route seven.
So you're up on top of the hill?
What's the address? Yeah, two oh eight Frazier Lane. And Larry Clevenger is my neighbor, he lives on Clevenger, there's no water up Clevenger even.
So you took over the gentleman's water tap, Dave Daniels' water tap at the third.
Yes, sir, years ago, yeah, I hold my water, yeah.
No, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Larry here has a pretty sophisticated filter system he pulls out of his pond for household water.
Your project on that is a sensitive, make the added difference.
How many homes is there?
There's four back on our property, and then there's Larry's, and then you have the whole family that has two properties.
We've lost six, eight taps.
And then Dave Lander's property, you know, we started doing that.
Yeah, there's a guy looking in to buy the first property coming up the hill.
And we don't have any projects on.
We've got projects for the double A, and it could spur off that.
See, it's a rundown from the old grape branch section of pouring, kind of is that. You know, it's kind of right in front of Clevenger, and I know that, I do this for a living, so I know what it entails to go underneath the highway. So, you know, I know there's a lot to do, it costs a lot of money.
So Clevenger's on the right hand side of the.
Yes, sir, yeah. Because if you drive over straight across from us down there driveway, you guys got a hydrant right there. I believe that's a six inch line to there. And I don't want you to forget the hill with.
Let's get to the end of the pressure.
Right.
So they have to get a pump.
It would have to have a pump.
We've got a project to go over the hill all the way to Route seven.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a project out to Five Go with the Water Council.
I heard that.
It takes it all the way out over the hill to Route seven.
Yeah.
That's been in the system for a couple, actually been in the system probably ten years.
For it to be profitable, it's about seventeen, eighteen taps per mile right now.
Right, right.
So. What was your address again?
Mine's two oh eight Frazier Lane.
Maybe one day next week, or wherever you got time, we'll drop it by there. Let us take a look out there.
Sure.
What is your number when I call you?
Seven four oh, two five one, eight two seven four.
What's your age?
Kerm, K D R M, and my last name's Frazier with a Z.
We'll take, we'll come out and take a look at it, and when we're out there, we'll give you a call.
If you guys just, if it was ever happened, you come to the property line, right, with the near pit, then we take off to the house, is that? Yeah.
This is for the whole entire city, and I'm jumping here, feel, since January.
Chad. Yeah, my name's Jack Conley, I'm the, you can introduce. Before we say, there are a couple of y'all already got my number. I'm going to be reaching out to, but the rest of you all, we've got a couple little matches going on that we're not ready to discuss here tonight, because I'm just getting into them. But I will be in touch, and just wanted to introduce myself and give you all a chance to talk to your attorney or whatever, you know, you needed to do. So I wasn't just calling you out of the blue.
And that's all that's on the list, speak. So we're going to move on to the next item on our, on our agenda, and this to. We put out a motion a couple of months ago to put out for bid for block topping. However, the state bid contract, I've been assured is much cheaper than what it would be if we just had them come in and give us a block top bid, so to speak. So we'd just be piggybacking off of the state, and that's what they get it for. After talking with the gentlemen this, this morning, we went around to those streets that are listed. That's sixty five thousand oh twenty six Haiti, the number that you see, I wrote beside it a high. Because he is a new estimator, he says that he estimates a high. Block top's at two inches thick, so he's still to the microscope, it's false, so he doesn't want to get in trouble. So he couldn't narrow it down any more than that for us. But as I've drove the streets, and I asked Roger Russell today as well about the streets, and those are the ones that are in the most irony. I will tell you that on Triple A and Archie Street, you have those curb gutters up there. Those curb gutters is what's caused a lot of the problems with beside the Dollar Store and Marathon Station. So we're going to go from curb gutter to curb gutter on each side of the street. We're going to do away with those curb gutters and go block top over. So I've spoken with Michelle, that's in the budget, and we're going to get to that a little bit later here, just a minute as well. Only thing I need to do is have a motion to accept the state bid contract on block topping. And then if it does come in over higher than this, then I'll cut, cut the stuff out if I need to. But as of right now, this is what we're going to do.
I'll make you a motion.
Second.
So we have a motion, second, to accept the state bid contract on block topping. Is there any discussion? Walnut Street will be in behind your house. Pretty bad. That's probably, if not the worst street, my street's probably the worst street, you don't see that on there. Don't drive my street. It's pretty bad. But it's not, it's great.
Is this hard to interpret for the new streets, or is that going to be the new streets?
Those are the streets on the, if you're looking at the Dollar Store, in between the Dollar Store and Marathon, and then Archie's in that street on the other side of Marathon.
I bought a car.
And then Vine Street will be from intersection of Vine and the Loess back towards Depp's Potter's Garage. Winterford Street will be fixing the patch from Damien Trucks' house, the patch on Second Street and Winterford Street. And Laurel Street will be from Walnut, Main Street to the intersection of Harry and LaFol Street.
Okay, that new street is just putting up there, you want to talk about that restaurant, or whatever you're doing? The pizza guy's street.
Pizza guy's street.
The one that, what, last two blocks back?
We've already incorporated those into the.
But they're already, they're not.
They're already there.
They're there?
Yeah, their structure there. Most of those are concrete.
This is kind of off, off this, but I have a question. Remember the spring when we did some hatching with the new process, not a network?
It worked out great, it saves us a lot of money. And something else that saves us a lot of money is we didn't have near as rough winters. Last year was kind of rough, but I didn't have to call in to take the prider to come spread a hundred tons of salt. Last thing I wanted to spread salt was in this, in the block top fund, we don't have a whole lot of money in the block top fund. So right now, it'll be Triple A, Archie Street, Walnut Street, Vine Street, Preston Avenue, Winterford Street, and Laurel Street. And then I'll use my judgment, as they're giving us tickets. And I see that we're going to be way over, and then I'll make cuts. So we have a motion, a second on the floor, roll call.
John Norman?
Yes.
Bruce Vance?
Yes.
Phil Dowdy?
Yes.
Dave Black?
Next item on the Carol's agenda was the first reading, which should have been second reading, and that's my fault of the annexation ordinance for Patrick Fadel. That's still not ready, Stephen has to notify Transportation Cabinet in thirty days. So it has the second reading in July. Have to give them thirty days. All those roads that border that down there, that's all state highway, right? You get some, that's all we have to give.
That's quite that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The mapping annexation.
Three.
That's the cigarette.
So Richard, while you're on the floor, go right here.
Well, that's really, that's all I want to talk about, is the mapping prepared annexation, and then that you want to talk about the bridge.
Yes, we will get to that. Richard and I were both in Franklin last week, we met with Secretary Goodman, KIA, talks about funding for Intakes Water Plant. I would say meeting with. Okay. Did you go best of rural, did you go worst? We've got some more avenues that we're still looking at. Progress is still in the works, so hopefully with the budget here coming up, we might be able to manage. It is, they're doing a nice job, Cornerstone's doing excellent job. They're, they're working all their contacts, the ones that actually set up all the fixing chores. And then once the General Assembly gets back into session. They'll be back down there more often, I'd say this year will be down there finally.
You know, it's the Indian River House, paying all the legislative stuff, skilled workers. And if you're trying to get money in a way that is going to help keep our guys at work, we're more than happy to help you get that money.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, yeah, we're more than glad to help out.
Before you leave, get his name.
Getting ready to have a call.
I got a question from Richard, I know. Okay. Two Y one, Manufacturing Housing comes in the back here, and I screen in the flood plain, we got Bill. I've already talked to you about this, who's going to certify those foundations, if it's very board of executives, you? We'd be applying, I mean, citizens are good, they do, it's going to get blind sighted on that. We don't know how to, a grand sus is going to inspect that, because we understand that, talking to Bill Toll, that that foundation's got to be in place and inspected, great, great, good.
Yeah, we'll have.
Agree to do that?
We might have to do that, I have to say.
But who doesn't? I mean, somebody has to be certified to inspect the foundations, because Mark's not here, and I know what he went through, it gets to certify. And what I've been through, and what project I did, and, you know, it's kind of like a complicated process, as you well know. So I just wanted, who's that picture to, if they're going to start, just going to fix Mr. Jackson back here.
July, July first.
July first? The Indian River, Bill Martin.
Home, home's coming into the city.
Manufacturing House.
That's your house.
It's all been changed. But like, excuse me, start finding Marty Mini more there, he's got his permits, but somebody's got to back him on that foundation, make sure it's up to code. I've talked to, I agree, boys, you should do that.
The Carter Vineyard, that's not, there's no residential building. With Barney Manning, that's not, there's no residential building requirement.
You're in the flood plain, that's where it'll be.
Well, then that goes, it's just doing the flood plain.
But who does certification on flood plain foundations?
Well, that, that right there is a, Barney Manning, that would just be a flood plain, a permanent process.
But that foundation's going to be certified elevation wise.
You're talking about elevations.
I'm talking about the foundation too, because you've got to have all that.
Well, that's if there's actually a building requirement for that.
Flood plain's got that.
If it's a mobile home, yeah.
But it's a house, you've got to build a house here.
Yeah, elevations and everything.
I got to have that elevation, I got to have that foundation.
Flood plain inspector does not certify their foundations. It's up to the individual to have that, right?
But who do they go to? That's my question. Jerry Boyd should do that.
Hire somebody to do it, or they can choose not to worry about that. Yeah, they can get caught by somebody, or that's a residential building. No one's enforcing that.
He did the elevation and everything. He told me that was all I needed, and the county told me that too.
Where's his flood plain?
The elevation.
But they're going to start on his house in a couple of weeks.
You're talking about, they're going to start requiring inspection.
It has been, I got caught on that with Moot Parsons.
Elevation wise, yes. And then also on the flood, on the flood resistance, if they have to meet the requirements of the...
Right, absolutely. The flow in and flow out. Who do we go to? That's what I'm trying to...
That's part of their flood plain, a permanent application, which then we review and approve.
Do you do that?
Yeah.
Then there's the inspection, and the, 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 the ironwork that goes in that, and the whole, that's your part. So Mr. Jerry Boyd's got to come out and make sure that all the tiles in, and all that. I'm just trying to find out who's doing that now.
We would actually do the, do the permit application.
But you're not a building inspector, and you can't do that inspection. So we need to know that, to advise any foundation's going to do that in this town.
Well, right now, does that inspection have to be done? Let's get July first.
Well, that's just when manufacturing comes in. I'm trying to protect anybody in this town that's wanting to bring one in, has had that inspection. It's got to be certified prior to bringing them in.
That's it, six months ago. Everybody here is open, we're fine.
I'm not one here.
Nope.
I'm not one here.
Nope.
I'm here, David, here, so. And this came last, I'll talk about it, it's the one that's on the end, has to be certified and inspected prior to, on those units getting in. That's what you need to structure it to, I said, Moot Parsons, or Marter, or whoever it is. That has to be running there. Got that below you, and all that, my legs. Wind resistant, you know, we've got to tie down, send that foundation, secure that seal plate. Usually eighteen inches. I don't know what it is today, which part. Tie the seal plate, or every time it holds down. We've got to have that coming through the foundation, that, 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 right. And they got their permanent foundation, maybe right now. I'm just trying to figure out who's going, who they have to do that inspection, and have ready. They like to buy something, and get...
I'll talk to the mayor and see, and do some communication these days.
No city has passed an ordinance above and beyond, let you know of.
Ordinance.
Yeah, because they're using bridge.
I got a copy of this thing. They're requiring bridge?
I should have brought it, I've got that, I know, I don't want to find, I don't want to make a blind side of where I'm at.
Well, you're talking about two different housing types, though, right? Because if it's a stick-built house and not manufactured, it's, I understand what Richard's saying. What you need is you need a flood plain elevation certificate that your foundation's on of. And, and what you do, and you also do, make sure that you got the flow through right, whatever else you need. Brooks, if I understand right, you're building a stick-built house.
We have one.
Okay, yeah, so he's okay.
Richard, I don't know, we did.
Yeah, but you're good.
Come back and do the post. And then you did a paper, I think, that came from Friday afternoon. So, and so he's good to do it.
You're good, yeah. Because you're building a stick-built house. But if it's a manufactured, and then I think what Phil's saying is, I'm not enough percent sure, I know it is, is that there is a foundation inspection requirement that has nothing to do with flood plain, about whether that foundation is enough, I mean, you have to comply with both. Like, there is, there's an inspection requirement that a foundation inspector has to give, that says, yes, this will support the way, and this is what it's supposed to be, plus it has to comply with flood plain. So if the flood plain complies as far as foundation, probably you can do it. But as far as the structural, is it okay? You're not going to do that.
Someone could hire us to do that.
Someone could hire you to do it, okay. So what do you define as...
We do all kind of structural inspection.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's what I'm trying to find out, because is this going to get complicated?
Could, real quick, if mobile homes coming, manufactured homes coming.
With the tie-downs and spacing.
Let's research that below, and then we'll get together and figure this out.
Probably you'll call them all then.
Yeah, we had meetings scheduled, and then they got canceled.
When somebody comes in, and they're wanting to say, what area is that home?
A manufactured house.
It's not this, like, where you actually put those things, right? Certain areas, or how do you go do that?
Yeah, we have planning and zoning, but I don't know, I haven't read the KRS early. But what I understand is, and this is as clear as I hear everybody talk, is that if... Unless you shoot Brendan Traxler, for example, because she's a... She gets mad at me, I know she'll get up. If Brenda decides to put in a manufactured home, that by KRS, she's allowed to do that no matter what zone. Because it's considered a home, so to speak.
But what they complicated with, you all passed paperwork, you have to say, it has to meet the requirement, everybody wrapped through there. And then we've got to put in the square footage requirement, and we've got to put in the roof fix requirement.
If we want to go above and beyond what the KRS says. So that's why we got full of KRS. Figure that out, and then the city's going to do the inspections.
Is there a difference in the, in the regulations for, because a mobile home and a manufactured home, there's a little difference in, in the type of homes we're talking about. There are some homes that they bring in on tractor trailers that are built as good or better than the homes that most of that was built from the, from the foundation up. And then there's local homes that they bring in on wheels, and then they just pop off the wheels and sell them on the foundation. The reason I'm saying this is, I've got, got a, probably a six, seven hundred thousand dollar home that was brought in in five pieces. Modular. Modular home. And it's no, in no way, shape, possibly considered anywhere near a mobile home. But did they take that into consideration, the modular, opposed to a mobile home?
Oh, manufactured house.
See, that ordinance said.
They made a manufactured house.
So it's either one.
It's gone.
You don't know?
I can't help you. The bank table scared me when I talked to Dylan Toll, because he does the inspections on the foundations, and it's out of the flood plain. But if it's in the flood plain, which foundation's coming, are all different criteria, what flood plain is. And manufactured housing, if it comes into a flood plain, it falls back under new construction. So that takes it back to home, and that might be where we have to go.
A little dubbing, see.
Flood plain department.
One of the things with housing, like you was talking about on wheels, of the brick underlay under it. And it's, looks like a house, you know. Is that legal, or is that illegal, or what? I mean, you're talking about manufactured homes, and trailers, or whatever you want to call them. What's the difference? I mean, there is a difference, but for us, if somebody moves in, we don't know what, what it is.
A lot of times you can tell the difference between the two, by the way they look.
This looks awful good.
People make my home look really nice. They're not sitting on the block.
Yeah, that's what I said, they put brick there.
They're only sitting on the block, sitting on it. They're not sitting on that foundation on the outside.
It says it's got to have a permanent foundation. Why we're building, because what's said, so.
Yeah, I would bet you can sit on them on a permanent, been for a hundred thousand.
Yeah, they can too.
It's got to be tied down.
Yeah, it's got to be seated on it, or it's standing.
All right.
It's got to have that spacing, and that, and that windshield bill, if you're going to do that too.
So we'll pull it out, and consider that, really, we don't, we don't have to deal with it.
Before they change that, the way you prescribed manufactured homes, is that three inch, five inch?
Not now.
Not now. Well, Richard, am I due to go ahead with that, proceed with that? As far as I... Well, I know. Well, I mean, you can be on the certificate.
Right, yeah. So it's, it's been approved. That's been approved.
But there is, got buildings inspector dealing with those.
Who's the building inspector?
That's, that's real question. Was Jerry Boyd.
Residential, I think you got to get to the, get an electric company, and they have electrical inspector.
You got to have they, you got to have plumbing too, you got to have all that.
He worked with electric, maybe he would have been.
Probably didn't have a license, thankfully.
All right, we're going to move on here. So we're going to research it, and we'll get back. Let's talk about Fifth Street Bridge. So Fifth Street Bridge, it is part of one of our disaster declarations. And the date on that bridge was built in nineteen thirty-two. I've got about forty-one pictures on my phone. Richard and I talked about it today, and we're going to talk about it some more by the end of the week. I feel pretty confident by beginning of next week, that bridge is going to be closed. Hopefully FEMA will reimburse us for that bridge. We've already been working with FEMA on what we want, and we're going to put back in the exact same thing that the state puts back in, the investments, and the county puts in. Let's say they don't do that. And our only other option is to come in and put two, possibly three tiles through there. And pave over gravel, make it kind of like Second Street, about the big hump there. As of right now, if memory serves me correct, Second Street has been approved for one of these. I think we're going to be replacing that tile there. Don't know me, but I think it falls in front of us. But I would say by middle to the end of this week, first, next week, Fifth Street will probably be closed. In worse shape than I thought it was. So I can remember in 2010, when I first become mayor, Jim Gill, worked here as a contractor. And he put jacks underneath of it, and we left them there. And those jacks aren't there. So we've gone back, a lot of us keep a lot of pictures on our phones, especially Roger Ayers. He's got thousands of pictures, and you can see where that bridge has dropped from these last storms, so. And probably by the end of this week, or next week, that bridge will be closed. Then it starts the FEMA process. If FEMA, the state, any government involved slows down. So we don't expect it to be very long. It's going to be opened up in a month, or two months, or maybe three months, I don't know. Might be six months before it gets opened up. Government, but so.
Two to three weeks now, Mike Markoff, not to travel over.
Richard and I, he's the structural engineer, and I will finish our conversation. We talked briefly today. We're going to finish our discussion as early as probably tomorrow.
Second Street doesn't have rails. They put the rails back on Fifth Street, so they can't run off this bridge.
It would have to fall under state and federal guidelines. So yes, there'll be some kind of...
If we win Second Street, is there, or is it the same thing there, with rails?
Well, possibly, but what I want to do first is I want to get that big hump out of there.
That's what I meant, if you go remove the hump.
I want to remove the hump, and when they put that in, that's only a single wall cover. And I want to put a double wall covered in there, and possibly two covers, to get rid of that hump. Again, I don't know how much money FEMA has allocated, or if they've even allocated to get. Once we get to that point, and I see where we stand at, and if we have money to put that there, or if they said, yes, it has to be there, then they'll be there. Whatever money they give you, you have to do it by their guidance. That leads me to my next thing. Michelle Beach and Tony Grub would like to sit down with three of you guys at a time to go over your monthly financials and the upcoming budget. So if you all have anything that you all want to say, leave it from the budget, and to go over the monthly financials. She's available every day next week, of the evenings, except for two. Sixteenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. Three evenings at a time. Well, Tony Bead, or just her? Tony should be here as well. Unless something major happens in Ashland. Why ask that question? Sixteenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, I just need to give her names. I'll go on the sixteenth. So Phil's on the sixteenth. Anybody else want to join Phil on the sixteenth?
What time is that?
I think that's Monday. Probably six o'clock. Phil, Dave. Bruce. And then we'll put, John wants picture schedule.
Eighteenth or nineteenth, either one.
Put you down the nineteenth, the other two since they're not here. Six. Yes, here. That way you all don't have a quorum when it goes. And that's all it's on, is it? I'm sorry, approve minutes, I always forget to approve minutes. Motion, approve the minutes. I have a motion, it's our second.
They had you report to the right.
Correct.
It's our second.
Same discussion. Roke.
John Norman?
Yes.
Bill Dowdy?
Yes.
Dave White? Bruce Mance?
Yes.
This is something, we've had a small, I have some...
Yes.
Do you understand?
Yep.
Is that good? Do I have a question?
I hope so. We're checking in, Angie's checking in, Angie's checking in to us now.
Is that a question?
Take the walk.
Oh, okay. Can we get like a special group to come in and actually paint that?
Yeah. We're about, no, we have a special group.
I know, so I made the, I, I, I made the suggestion.
Especially the special group comes out a little more lax, and they want like forty-some thousand dollars. So we just tried to look for a director to come in and paint it. We ordered the stencils off, man, so.
Okay.
Does anyone want to give another quarter this side? Like, hey, we're coming to do an old fashioned days, or no, I guess, too.
On this side?
Yeah.
I don't think we want to go down that, or I don't know, it's Sixth Street.
This is probably the least... Oh, yeah. It's a great one.
So it's all it's on, did it? Okay. That's Stephen Mitchell.
You have motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn? I have a second. Roke.
Phil Dowdy?
Yes.
John Norman? Dave White? Bruce Mance?